Good morning.
Good morning.
We will call this work session to order and I thank everyone for being here today. Public comment, clerk, I believe we have one citizen who signed up. But before we start with the citizen's comment, I just would like to read this. It says, "The Board of Commissioners welcomes our citizen's comment. It is my goal to make these meetings run smoothly and effectively in order for the government to be efficient. In this vein, I ask everyone to follow the rules of this body as directed by the chair." I also ask that everyone please assist me in keeping order in this room during this deliberation process so that our citizens' time, including those watching on TV, and our time is not fruitless. When I give a warning about timeliness or request order, I ask that you observe it. If I give a second warning about timeliness or request for order and the saying is not observed, I will ask a second warning about timeliness and request for order to be restored. I will ask our Sergeant of Arms, which means our law enforcement, present to restore order to this meeting. Also, please be mindful of the three-minute limit, and when you hear the buzzer, please wrap up your sentence. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Our first citizen is Mr. Larry Pierce. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Move us over here to the...
The microphone.
Did everyone hear me? Good. That's the first order of business. Larry Pierce, 4120 Van Sant Road, Douglasville, Georgia. I am so glad that policies and things are written so we can all follow them. But one of the biggest ones is a constitution that says freedom of speech. And I don't know how I got involved in all this mess, but it is another time in our life that Halloween's coming. So Mr. Pennington, who says 7-Eleven was a hoax, he fits right into October. Now, good morning, Madam Chair and fellow council people and commissioners, both of them, city and everybody. Last week, there was a few little things said, but you know, I told my son a long time ago that the word "shut up" is ugly, and it's kind of like joking in Alabama, "Trailer park trash." So anyway, be it what it may. The coroner, and I guess you know, when you hear Larry Pierce's coroner slash, the coroner started out telling you some facts that she thought was true, and Ann Jones brought it out chronologically to you. And every one of you heard it, but evidently, Mr. Mitchell likes to say about what is transparent. And I'll tell you what, some of y'all's glasses are getting really fogged up because you can't see what she's saying. Now, last week, the Sheriff's Department celebrated a man who was infamous in this county, as much as Buford Pusser was in Tennessee trying to clean up gambling and Sodom and Gomorrah and a little bit all that stuff. So anyway, 20 years, and he came to his hat, signed by him, when he was coming out of the meeting. And he said, "Larry, if you ever need it, I'm going to sign it, and it's your get out of jail free card." So let me tell you something. What does that mean? Oh, all right. The coroner is costing money, and I'm going to give it to you next week. The cooler is a facade of money pit. It's costing all the old money, okay? And I'm going to bring it to you with the facts. And I went to the cemetery and talked to Earl Lee, and he said, "Larry, I'm coming back, and we need a lot of soldiers like you." And I said, "Sheriff, I'm with you." Is my three minutes is up? Okay. Well, next week will be the report that will be a good getter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pierce. We'll take this matter under advisement. For commissioners, before we move into our presentations, I just wanted to say that I respect your comments, and I want you to ask questions as we address the needs of our government. However, I ask that we show improvement with our self-imposed time constraints during your deliberations, or I will have to move towards timeliness sanctions utilized by the Congress and the Senate to run this meeting. The administration has taken giant steps in elevating our transparency, but in the same disposition, our board meetings must align with our purpose by engaging fundamentally clear and concise discussions in order to hold the attention spans of our leadership team, our citizens in the room, and those who are watching by TV. And it's certainly me, I'm trying to do a better job of managing these meetings, so if you could just help me, I would greatly appreciate it. Our first presentation today is review of Coast to Coast Prescription Discount Program by our Director of Human Resources, Fred Perry. He's not here, so we'll move on to the next. Our next presentation is Departmental Standard Operating Procedures Policy Review Initiative, Tiffany Stewart Stanley, Director, External Affairs.
Good morning, commissioners. Tiffany Stewart Stanley, Director, External Affairs. And I am here with the presentation today about a 2018 Douglas County Comprehensive Review of Existing Standard Operating Procedures and Administrative Policies. The purpose of this comprehensive review will be to take an in-depth look at existing department standard operating procedures and administrative policies, too. Number one, determine if a standard operating procedure or policy is still needed, or if it should be combined with another policy. Number two, to determine if the purpose or the goal of the policy is still being met. And number three, to determine if changes are required to improve the effectiveness or clarity of the policy. And the fourth reason is to ensure that the appropriate education, monitoring, and ongoing review of the policy is occurring. Standard operating procedures and policies should align with the county's mission, vision, and values. Standard operating procedures and policies should characterize relationships and control measures, and they should also answer the following questions: Who does what? Who has what role, or what person is responsible? What do they do? What are the tasks? The frequency of those tasks, and to what standard or criteria are they measured? And then what is the outcome when they do it? What are your deliverables, your measures, your objective results? Why is it important to initiate the comprehensive review? Outdated policies can leave the county at risk. Old policies may fail to comply with new laws and regulations. Regular review of policies and procedures will keep the county up to date with regulations, technology, and industry practices. Policy review ensures that the county's policies are consistent and effective. So the approach: This review will require the corporation's participation from all department directors. These policies will be identified by the department directors of the designated departments. The department directors will examine their policies and procedures and provide comments in a Word format document. The department director will be responsible for aligning the standard operating procedures with best practices with the changing environment. So each department will provide a copy of these policies or procedures to the Department of External Affairs for review. Once these policies undergo review, the Department of External Affairs will provide a status update to determine the next steps for revising, editing, and updating any outdated policies to the county administrator. Any significant changes and updates to the policies deemed necessary by the county administrator will be reviewed by the legal department, and if necessary, will be presented to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioners, you also have a copy of the policy review checklist. This is a checklist that each department will receive to be able to make an assessment on whether or not their policies are up to date and compliant. Some of the things on this checklist are: Is the policy consistent with the core values, principles, initiatives, and strategic plan of the county? Have there been any deviations from the policy in the past year? And if so, were those deviations significant enough to consider revising the policy? Is the policy consistent with current technology? Does the policy comply with current legislation? Are there any contradictions? And should the scope be modified, so to whom or what it applies? Should that be modified? So some of the possible outcomes: The first possible outcome is that the policy works as is, and there will not be a need to make any adjustments. The second outcome is the policy is outdated and will need to be updated, eliminated, or combined with another policy. There may also be small changes that require adjustments to language or phrasing. And in some cases, there will be, that have changes to laws or regulations, there may require a more involved process, though it will include input from the legal department. The timeline for this process, the review process will begin November 1st, and the review process is estimated to be completed by December 31st. Some of the goals of the comprehensive review: Once the policy review is updated and finalized, the policies will be distributed to the employees of the designated departments and will be placed on the website. The policies will be reviewed annually by the department directors, the Department of External Affairs, and a designated policy review committee if the commissioners and the county administrators seek it. And then ultimately, these policies will align with the forthcoming Board of Commissioners Strategic Plan process that will begin in January of 2019.
That's all I have. Are there any questions? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners on this? And I can just kind of tell you a little bit, I sent you all an email regarding this. I sent you an email last week regarding just my intent to look at the policies within the organization. I had an opportunity to look at just one of our departments, and I noticed that the date on the policy was about 11 years ago, so I said, "We need to..." And that's just part of organizational process, just revisit them and just say revise, or you may not do anything to them or think. But I did send the Board of Commissioners an email, so just please take a look at those. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually encouraged, you know, being here for almost 10 years, for us to be at this place where we're looking at more of a comprehensive approach to our policies. Sometimes we get comfortable in the way things are, the way things have been done, and not recognizing that the macro environment has shifted. It's always prudent from time to time just to revisit things. Doesn't even mean that things need to be changed, but then it gives opportunity for it to do so. And Madam Chair and I had had this conversation recently, because one of the goals, and this is really for my peers, one of our fundamental goals is what we set budgets and we pass, what? Policies. We get behind policies. And I'll be short with my commentary, because this is something that, you know, we've been looking forward to, to really, you know, there's the administrative side, and then there's the legislative side, two distinguishing different places. And this is where we show up every, what, two weeks and stuff, and we weigh in. We're policy setters, right? So obviously, this is going to get us busy. But what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is just to clarify to the extent that what I'm hearing is that this is strictly departmental. Obviously, this is not local legislation. Obviously, I don't hear an ordinance review, which is something that we would go take on. But Ken, is there, this is more of a legal question, like, for example, there's a purchasing, and Bill, don't pick on you, but I'm just using, it's easy for me, there's a purchasing policy that's in your department, you know, I've got a copy of those. Ken, in that case, is that something that's done by purchasing alone, or is that something that ultimately needs to get to the Board of Commissioners? I mean, do you have a matrix? Do you intend to put a matrix in place to say, "Okay, when do we need to get involved, and when don't we need to get involved?" I guess I'm trying to hear that.
Well, I think that's, to y'all, how you get involved, if it's purely administrative and not an ordinance revision, it could be handled by the county administrator and his department heads. If it requires an ordinance change, it has to be handled by y'all in public hearing context. So I think it sort of depends on what the rewrite is. If it's purely processed and not substantive ordinance, then it's, it sounds like it may be administrative, but Bill, I'll refer you.
I agree.
Well, Bill, you got a purchasing policy, and I'm just, is it something that you would just handle within your department, or is it something you think that needs to be floated to the Board of Commissioners?
If it affects...
Use contracts.
Contracts. If it affects, well, any contract has to come before the board, so that's, we're not going to change that. And it's, Madam Chair has to sign those contracts. She's the authority within the county that has that right. So, and that's working well, I don't see a need to change that. The other would be the level of authority for approvals, you know, for purchase orders and purchases and things like that. We may want to relook at that, but those are the things that...
But any changes to those items like that would require Board Commissioners approval.
Exactly, because that would feed back into the approval of purchases.
All right, and I'm going to, Madam Chair, if there's a question, we'll keep our comments short. It sounds like this is primarily initiative, and may reach the Board of Commissioners to get involved, but I yield, I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, primarily housekeeping from the administrative side, so we can look at our standard operating procedures and just how we function day-to-day. And it's not bad to have those, so you could, you have new hires and new employees coming, you have something to, a guideline for the, for the staff as they come forward. And it's just good to have those policies reviewed once a year, that's annually, what I'm typically accustomed to. Any other questions from the Board before we move on to the next? Commissioner Mitchell?
Just one, so, I heard a lot just a moment ago, so shouldn't that, and you might want to weigh in on this, shouldn't that go through the administrator, the county administrator, versus, I don't know, I don't want to put this load on you to kind of say oversee what that is, but I'm just, my thought process is, that's what we got the county administrator here for, is to oversee policies and procedures from departmental. So if there's a purchasing concern, I think this, my thoughts are, it would be Mark who would kind of follow that.
And he is, that's what I've said, ultimately, it's Mark, but we still got to go back and look at some of the policies that are out there, review those books to give you an idea. I looked at a couple of policies that are sitting out there, standard operating procedures, they've just been sitting there since 2004. I know things have changed since 2004, so it's just that, the county administrator's definitely involved. His name was actually on the PowerPoint. You want to respond?
Yep.
Well, let Commissioner Mitchell finish.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, and according to the information that I just provided, basically, what my responsibility would be, be more so compiling the information, and then once I compile that information, the policies and the comments by all of the departments, I'm going to then give that information to the county administrator, and then he, he will be the person who makes the decisions on what needs to be updated, what needs to be sent to legal, what needs to go before the Board of Commissioners. I'm more of a facilitator of getting the information together for the county administrator.
Understood. My thought process is, that would automatically go to Mark anyway, maybe with you and he kind of teaming up on this, but not going to you and him to decide on what consolidation or what information that you consolidated, not to add to your, to your job. Duties and no responsibilities, but I thought that's what he's here for, and if not, then maybe I got something wrong. Help me out with that.
I don't think you have anything wrong. I don't think that, it's just a process of trying to make sure that all this information is compiled by Mark. She reports to Mark, so of course she's working...
Right, that's my thought, so she reports to Mark, so...
Yeah, so she's working, so she's pulling all the information together. He's well aware, I sent him an email as well, so he's going to help, she's going to facilitate the information, get it to him. He's going to make the final decisions on policy revisions, changes, but all this information has to be pulled.
But not policy changes, still make...
I mean, standard operating.
Right. Standard operating procedure changes.
Right.
As to what that is.
Right.
So you are engaged with this whole thing.
Yes, he is.
And I'm not trying to take away, or take anything away from what you're doing, and that's great, but I'm more concerned with what is, what is his job?
Oh, yeah, he's engaged.
There's actually code that defines his job, and he is responsible to y'all and the chairman for the day-to-day operations of the county, including department heads and the efficient administration of their policies and whatever. So he has to be in the clog somewhere.
Yeah, he's in there.
So all recommendations, all these policies, standard operating procedures will go through me, and then I'll make recommendations.
Period.
And your slide said that, that it'll go through Mark. She said that on the slide.
Well, maybe I heard something wrong, and maybe...
Yeah, and I won't be making any decisions about what will be eliminated, or I will just be giving that information to the county administrator.
And can you roll that back to the slide that it says that, so we can give this Commissioner Because you said that it would be going through him, it's a lot of work to get, is it the last piece?
So, yeah, it's here, and it just, so one...
That's the bottom, yeah.
The bottom, "All significant changes and updates to the policies deemed," I can't see passing.
Well, actually, once the department's given me the information, I'll just go through review and put the information together. Then the information will be, I will provide all the information to the county administrator, who will then determine what is outdated, what it needs to be eliminated, and...
And let me stop you there, let me just stop you there. I get it, you're trying to consolidate information, but I think he's got to be the point person versus you being the point person in the whole makeup, to assure that when there's an issue with procedure, I'm coming to him, even about you and what you got as your department that you run. So that's what I'm trying to make sure I'm looking out for clarity, is Mark is in the folder. If he's in the folder, I'm okay with that, but Mark should be receiving with you all of the information.
Yes.
Not separating, deciphering, or deciding on what to give to Mark.
No, you're correct.
Whether the department head gives something good, bad, or indifferent. Mark's, Mark, you get all that information, because Mark would be the point person that I come to, because I don't deal with staff like that.
That's correct.
So that was just my clarity.
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm not trying to create a unique moment here, though. I just thought for clarity that that's Mark's job to assure that the policies, not policies, but the procedures of departments whom report to him as to what that information is and how it's done, so.
And I think more, hers is more fact gathering or getting the information so we can get it in his hands, because it's a voluminous amount of work that's out there, and she'll just be the person that bring it to him, but Mark is ready to go.
Well, I think, I hear what I'm saying, though. I get that she's...
Well, he will, he will legal, he will, he'll be much, well, let me say this, we haven't done this in probably over 10 years, and this is a huge effort for this county, and we need to look at policies, and we will do that.
And I appreciate that.
Yes. So this is, this is huge, and the county administrator will be our nucleus of this project, but his person that reports to him will make sure that she get all the information, because he can't do it by himself. It's a lot of work out there that needs to be done with these policies. In fact, I would like to see a policy review committee. We need a policy community, review committee, because there's so many out there, that it's going to be more than just the county administrator looking at them, but looking at those policies, but he is ultimately responsible. So, any other questions before I move forward?
I wasn't done.
Okay.
So, I get it, I understand, I just want for clarity that Mark is whom we as commissioners...
Absolutely, and I agree.
So with that, no matter how much information is gathered, to me, I would have kind of understood it a little bit better, and this is kind of all new to me, though. And yes, it's probably a good idea to review procedures, I totally agree, and we do that where I work annually. However, but the point person is the county manager, in this case in point, whether, how he wants to gather the information, whom he wants to kind of assemble the information, and how that process goes, but he needs to be tasked and held accountable for that, not Tiffany. And I don't think Tiffany wants to be held liable for that type of, and I don't think she can.
I don't think she's going to get tasked, that's what I'm...
So with that, Mark, for clarity, I'm assuming you're on point with whatever this procedure process of your departments, I'm assuming that you're on point with when you're going to get the information, what kind of reporting back to us as a board, what that look like administratively, and all that kind of good stuff.
Yes, although this is relatively new to me, too. I just got an email when y'all got it. I was out of, I was out of all that. But the, my understanding, the standard operating procedures and/or policies are due by November 1st, so that we can review those, and hopefully, we'll have those ready.
Is that a realistic date, though? I mean, I just...
That's pretty tight.
Yeah.
We're going to shoot for that.
It's, that's when it will start, the process will start in November 1st. And all the information that I receive, I will be given to the county administrator, so I'm not making any decisions.
And I got that, and I'm not, you know, I'm trying to create a, actually, you know, it is not, I just know whom I kind of look for and seek the information from, and that's the county administrator. So if you're kind of know where you're going, what this is, and try to meet Madam Chair's requests in 30 days, I'm just...
No, it's, the deadline is December 31st.
Okay, so we got a timeframe.
I saw November 1st in there somewhere.
That's why I saw November 1st.
It starts November 1st, and ends December 31st.
Because we talk about procedures, and we talk about a whole lot of stuff. I mean, perks and recs, to programming, to finance, to, I mean, just, that's a whole lot that's being asked, and I just don't...
That's during budget time, December, so...
So that's a whole lot, and I'm not saying that you can't, or you, who should or shouldn't, it's just that I think there's a whole lot to ask for, it's a short window, and to get it right, so.
Yeah, some may take longer than others.
Yeah.
Oh, I know it's...
And certainly, I'm reflexive.
I know it's going to take a lot longer than others, with everything else coming, the day-to-day doesn't stop.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so, I yield that. I retract.
Okay. Commissioner Iter?
I think what the Commissioner was saying is that the vetting of any information should be on the shoulders because of, and I've always been confused about this grant form, because the department heads do the grants, so why do you sign off on them?
Well, that is...
Are you telling them not to apply or to apply?
Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, I don't have that authority.
It says required internal affairs signature, and I don't understand that.
The purpose of that, according to the grant development handbook, is to just be able to, be able to make sure that we're keeping up with the grants, what's coming in, as far as grants, so that's why the form is required to be sent over, so that way I can keep a record, and we can just say, "This is the information that was provided." I don't have the authority to tell...
But is it that put in the minutes, you know, when we approve it or vote on it, it's part of the minutes, so it just seems a little redundant. I just wonder, are you telling them they cannot apply?
No, ma'am, I don't have that authority.
Or they can't apply?
No, ma'am, I don't have the authority to tell a department to apply or not to apply. What that is, it's more of a document that helps keep up with the, with what grants we have going on. It's clearly for that purpose, so we can have the information on who the grant is for, the grantor, the information to contact the grantor, what date it was applied, what date they received authorization, that they were accepted. It's more of a, just information keeping up.
But do you keep a running total of the grants?
Yes, ma'am.
Or just Mark?
Well, I have, I have the one, I have, I have it in mind, the part.
She's over brand administration.
Yes, so I just keep, I have all of those forms, I keep them, so that way, if, you know, I need to calculate the total at any time, I can give it to you.
And do you keep up with the renewal date or the time that we would reapply for a grant?
Well, I have a list of grants that we've applied for the last year and a half since I've been here, and things like that, but typically, what I do is I just, the departments that apply for the grants, they let me know, and if there are grants that I see the department is applying for, I'll send that information to them. So it's my job to kind of find grants for departments, so I send those to the departments and say, "Hey, this is a grant that I feel like would fit your department," like the grant that's on the...
Agenda.
Agenda today. I found that grant, I sent it to the department, spoke with Judge Peggy Walker, we determined it was a fit, got the information to them, we all compiled a whole bunch of different information, and then I submitted the grant to the agency.
So part, part of your job description is to be seeking grants for all departments, road department, whatever.
Yes, any, any grants that I have.
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, it says...
Senior citizens.
Continuously seek grant, grant funds for the county.
Okay. I give back.
Okay, we'll move on to the next. Are we finished?
I just wanted to volunteer, make sure I'll be on the policy committee, those that reached the Board of Commissioners, that's all.
Yes. And these are, just like I said, right now, standard operating procedures and those ones ago, and certainly, I'm very fluid with the dates, but I wanted to put some type of parameters around it so we can move forward. We hadn't looked at them in a while. So let's move to the next item. The next item is review of Coast to Coast Prescription Discount Program... So let's move to the next item, the next item is, uh, review of Coast to Coast Prescription Discount Program, uh, Director Perry. He's here. Thank you, um, Director Stanley.
Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners, I don't necessarily have a, a presentation, just wanted to come for informational purposes to talk about the Coast to Coast, uh, discount program, to let our employees, as well as the, uh, the greater dis- uh, Douglas County citi- citizens know that we do have a discount program in place. And this was something that was started back in twenty sixteen, under, uh, West Town's, uh, tenure. This was something that got connected with a program called Coast to Coast, uh, prescriptions. Uh, this is a program that's, uh, backed by ACCG, and it's made affordable to all counties, uh, throughout the, uh, the state of Georgia. Now what this is, it's a discount program for prescriptions, for dental, for vision, uh, even for veterinary services. So we have a card here that you present at the time of service, and we have these cards available in the, uh, in the Human Resources Department. You present this at the time of service, and you actually see if this discount program would be greater than your, uh, your actual medical plan. So you present this card along with your, uh, your medical plan, and the actual, uh, uh, pharmacy will let you know which, which, uh, discount is greater. So I want to bring, uh, just bring this to light, this has been something that we've been a part of since twenty sixteen. The program hasn't been as prevalent, but, uh, through our conversations, we wanna make a, uh, kind of a relaunch of sorts, just to, uh, to, to magnify this program and make sure that everyone knows that it's available. Now, we have distributed cards to various departments that have a lot of public contact within the county, uh, in parks and recreation, uh, transportation, uh, there are a couple of other, uh, departments where we, we've dropped off cards. So we wanna make sure that the, uh, the Douglas County citizens are aware of this program. Um, and it's really good, uh, all of the, uh, pretty much all of the major pharmacies that are here in Douglas County, Publix, Kroger's, Walmart, Sam's, they all honor this discount card. Um, and from what I'm told, there are up to seventy-five percent discounts on certain, uh, generic and brand name prescriptions, so. Just wanted to make you all aware of that and, uh, and continue to push this program. We're going to be talking about this during the open enrollment period as well, to make sure our employees know that it's available. And, um, let's see if there are any other things. Card is good for the entire family, so the entire family just needs one card. Um, again, it's up to seventy-five percent discounts on brand name and generic, uh, prescriptions. Um, let's see here, no card, no paperwork to fill out, all you need is this discount card, it's just a little bit of information that you fill out on the card. But, uh, that's pretty much it, it's pretty simple, and, uh, the rewards can be, uh, fairly, fairly substantial.
So glad we raised that information off, certainly asked about it because Fulton County has launched that Coast to Coast, uh, pro- prescription program, and certainly Douglas County, we are competitive, I wanted to know if it was anything available, didn't realize it was sitting in a box, but it's now active. We want our citizens to have a privilege of, all citizens, uh, to this, uh, discount prescription, and so thank you so much for rolling that out. Press release will be, uh, released by Communications today-
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, to allow our citizens to know, and also our employees, this is a great benefit, so we really appreciate this.
Also wanna highlight that there's no expiration date for the card, uh, there's no minimum time or maximum time so you can utilize it.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, I mean, you bring up a good point, and this is, and I'll, I'll put this out to the, to the administration, which is, you know, our connectivity to the public. We make assumptions that the public is aware, whether they are or not. Um, we, we put demands on the public, well, you need to get more involved, but yet, government is not the most frivolous of things. Using your contractors because something you've done wrong, whether it's enforcement, whether it's judicial, uh, oh, I, I've got a DMV, maybe it's licensing, so it's like a big business regulatory. It doesn't, it doesn't interact with government in a, in, in a traditional sense. Yes, we're creating things like citizens academies, a lot of people come in through a positive way, but, but, and to learn more about government, but the majority of the people, forget the activists, the majority, they're sleeping there in their own world. And so they don't know a lot about, well, how do you not know about this? And it's like, well, we're in our own, we're in a silo. Eighty-seven hundred Hospital Drive. I say that to say, Madam Chair, I'm just asking the question, which is, how do we do better in ensuring the people that need this gets this? Everybody doesn't go to our website, it's not in their world, I mean, you, everybody knows you're in your own microcosm, you don't do this unless you worked here, right? You have your own, so how, how do we do better in getting this out in the hands of the people? Because you point, we've had this before, we had this very conversation, we had this during the recession, when people really needed this card, uh, and really could've been in from it. So, I mean, it, it's more of a challenge, I don't have a question, but it's like, how do we, what is the strategy to get, I mean, I hear what you're saying, the normal transportation, normal, the, the normal outreach, but Madam Chair, how do we reach the people, the masses? And I just, I don't know what the answer to this, and I'm, I'm open, but I would like to see that we really make a push, not just to say a press release, when people ain't gonna see, they ain't gonna know my news feed, I'd have missed it. If I don't see that what's happening, because I've got a thousand emails, I miss it. And I don't want us to be delusional about because we do something, that we reached the people, and that they really got it, so, I yield.
Calama, uh, Communications Director, respond how you're gonna reach them, we have a plan to do so. Thank you, Director Martin.
Sure, good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I'm just returning from some time off, but, uh, upon reading my emails, uh, we are working on a press release currently, like the department is, that will be disseminated today. In addition with the press release, we plan on a systematic approach in alerting the public. In addition to the press release to the media, which we have today, in addition to our website, where there'll be an article, in addition to Facebook, where we'll be utilizing social media, Douglas County happenings, we also plan to email nearly ten thousand of our subscribers to Douglas County as well. We also plan on repetition, so it's just not today, but next week, in terms of a systematic approach. We also plan to encourage those who have shows on DCTV twenty-three to utilize this as well. I've already discussed with Director Perry to be a guest on one of our shows to address matters of such. So I just wanted to share our systematic approach with Communications and Community Relations Departments on how we plan to share this information.
And then also Chapel Hill News and Views is going out in DC.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Mitchell, I saw you first, I'm sorry.
Uh, just wanted to quick, uh, good job, uh, finding the information out there, but, you know, hopefully the signal, layer sitting in the room will be more than willing to, to take a press release of that caliber and let the general public know. I wanted to add, though, um, this is not, this is not new, this is not a new program, or what's, what's new about the, about this one and the one we, we had before that was rolled out, is there some difference in the two?
Well, it's the same one.
It's the same one, okay, all right, cause this is not new.
No, it's not new.
The biggest, the, the concern is not too many people used it, you know, adhered to it, or, or took advantage of. Because this is, I mean, this has been around for a minute. And so there's no, there's nothing new about it outside of trying to get everybody made aware that here is an opportunity for you to get some discount on your, on your meds, and, um, I don't know what kinda cost that they would incur in all of this, but I'm assuming all that was, is within the information that you, that they, once they kinda get on this particular program, determine what those numbers are.
Right, right.
So.
And it depends, depends on what the prescription is and what have you, right?
But I just wanna make sure it's clear that we, we, we took ownership of this several years, a couple of years or so ago. It's just that, I'm assuming we probably did a poor job, if you wanna blame anybody, a poor job at communicating this to the general public.
Right.
Not that this program didn't exist, or still exists, and it, and don't know how many would jump on. Do you have any numbers of, of previous, I mean-
Previous, uh, utilization?
Yes, well, not, not communication, but that maybe those that jumped on board on the bandwagon of doing this, or, or, you know, getting the discounts.
I can get numbers, uh, actually, we do have some numbers, uh, and I can get those to you, Commissioner.
And previous, yeah.
Now, I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about other counties within Georgia that have utilized this number.
No, I'm telling you, those with us. Okay, that we did whenever we rolled it out before, when Wes was here.
Okay.
Did we activate it?
Yes, yes, we did.
From talking with a representative from Coast to Coast.
Yeah, Douglas County as a whole, not Douglas County government, but Douglas County had, uh, poor utilization of this.
Yeah, okay.
Now, it may not be, you know, sometimes using your own insurance card is cheap.
Right.
You can use one of the others, though it may not be a reason to use the card, but it's available and you can do it.
I understand, I, I mean, I just, just kinda would love to see some numbers to say, you know, twenty percent of Douglas Countyans used it, or-
I wanna find it out.
Used it during the timeframe when it was, when it rolled out the first time, and, and hope that we communicate better with those that are hopefully around now that might need it. Uh, and it may be that those that got insurance don't even, don't want it, don't, it, it costs them, it's, it's cheaper for them to use, to use a little possible shield.
Right, and I, I would hope that those who do have insurance would take the card anyhow-
Okay.
And present it along with their insurance card to find out which one is greater.
Got it.
Because, uh, from the, uh, the conversation that Mark and I had with the, with our sales representative, he said that in a lot of instances, the discounts that you receive with this card is actually greater than your insurance discount.
Got it, and, and that's educating the general public to know that, and to include the employees of Douglas County, kinda to, to do them both and see which one is a savings.
Right.
Okay, I yield.
Commissioner Lock, here.
Yeah, my, uh, question was answered, uh, my, my question was answered, uh, because I was curious about, uh, how we're gonna judge effectiveness in communicating in the community if we don't have numbers.
Right.
So apparently we can get numbers, so that's, that's, that'll be a good way to, uh, to gauge effectiveness. Uh, the other was just, is more of a statement, you mentioned that the information would be going out with the, uh, Chapel Hill News and Views, and that's good, but, uh, that thing's awful thick, and sometimes you just kinda glance through it and you miss things.
You miss it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's very valuable and, and, and worthy, but, uh, you can, you can very easily miss things in there. Uh, Chapel Hill News and Views, by my experience, has been very effective and fairly cheap using inserts. In other words, putting a flyer in the plastic bag about, about this program, so that, that might be something, uh, I'm just whispering in my ear that they don't do that anymore, but maybe they would, maybe they would do it for-
I'm trying to do it.
Maybe they would, uh, maybe they would do it for, for, as a public service, for the county government, so, I yield back.
Did you hear that Communications Director?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Commissioner Guyer?
Yes, um, we have like three pantries here, we have the Care Place, seems to me that those could be ideal places to distribute a flyer or something like that.
We, we also, Madam Chair, we have a order in for additional cards, so we're expecting a large shipment of cards to-
Thank you.
To come in, and distributed the ones that we have right now, and so possibly, uh, by, by the end of this week, we'll have a new shipment of cards, and we can very well give a, uh, a, a number of cards to those pantries that you speak of.
Okay, I think there's three, the mountaintop, and the one on Highway five, and I think there's one on ninety-two, so it's down there. But, uh, and then the Care Place also.
Absolutely.
Thank you, I yield back.
Right, sure. Commissioner, uh, Guyer, maybe think something, uh, it's pretty effective to, if you're disseminating information, is to get them in barber shops and, uh, beauty salons, if, if they will let you, and I think in cases like this they will, so that would kinda be a challenge for each, for each commissioner to distribute these things into the beauty shops and barber shops, so, I yield back, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, next we have a swastika update, Mr. Gable.
Madam Chair, let me move that podium to the left a little bit.
Mr. Gable, could you move the podium to the left a little bit, please?
Get it moved out. There's covering screens for people on this side, right? Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning.
My name's Terry Gable, I'll be here to, uh, to, uh, talk about the October update. Uh, we, we, I'll be reporting on the August revenues and for work through September. With that, we'll, we'll get started, so this is our pie, our pie, pie chart showing the, the three program elements. Uh, the main thing to look at here is the, the total revenues that we've built out so far. It's about thirteen percent of the program, we're still right at ten million dollars, um, of invoices that have been approved. We've got some, uh, some bigger numbers coming in towards end of the year, so I expect that to grow, um, particularly with the, uh, the radio system. Uh, this is broken out by program element, uh, fire EMS, about four point four millions, what we've, we've spent to date. Transportation's right at four millions. And then finally, parks and recs, we're still on forty thousand dollars, and we've got a lot going on, as most of you know, with parks and recs. Uh, got a project that just started construction, and it's got a lot of design work going on, and that's keeping the numbers down, but, uh, again, beer's gonna have a lot of work coming up towards the end of the year. Now, getting into the revenue side, um, so good news again for, uh, August, the revenues, uh, did drop some, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, but we're still above the forecasted, uh, model of just a little over two million dollars, so hopefully the trend will stay above the line. Um, and if anything, like, like I said last report, we're going into the holidays, and we'll see that number steadily increase. Just another graphic of it, we were at about two point one million for revenues for the month of August. And then look at the, the total numbers for the program, both year one and two, uh, swastika dollars is about thirty-four point one million dollars. That's, original seventeen-month projection was thirty-four million, so we actually, this is the first month that we're actually showing a small overage, uh, for the total program, and that's, we've been trying to catch up with the numbers that came in last year, so that's good news. Uh, and then the numbers just for year two, again, two point one million was the, uh, the revenues. The, for the five-month period, we're now showing about a close to half a million dollars of, of overage, uh, above what was projected. So again, that's good numbers, and hopefully that, that'll, that'll continue the trend. The, let me catch up on the slides. So if you remember, in year one, we, uh, we paid back about ten million dollars for bond obligations. Uh, we on track this year of paying about seventeen point seven million dollars, we made the first payment in October, one point three million, and we'll make the, the second payment in April, April first of sixteen point three. So with that, we'll, I'll get into some of the project updates. The, the County Ride, uh, digital radio system, it, it's, it's continuing to move forward, we're staying within scope and, and budget. Uh, the city of Douglas, so we're still waiting on them to approve an, an IGA for that existing tower, uh, and we still got three parcels of property that we're, we're either trying to get lease agreements for, or moving forward with, uh, some either environmental on some of the property, that was in South Douglas, and it's all, all steel gas and factory shows. The work that Motor World is doing with the other sites and the towers is moving on very well, they got a lot of work going on with foundations, and we have, we've actually got some tower steel on, on sites, and those will be going up soon, so they're, they're about thirty percent done right now with the, with the overall radio system. The chief is, um, getting in two amulets this year, they're about ninety-five percent complete, and we're expecting those in, uh, this month. The fire truck is, uh, ten eight was the vendor for that, and it's actually in Cobb County. Uh, chief was telling me that they're making some final revisions for that, uh, and we'll be hopefully getting that in soon. And fire station three, Titus Construction, started work, uh, they're moving along very well, the main thing we've got to work with staff, and we're trying to get the, uh, the lease agreements, uh, secured for the temporary housing. Once we do that, we gotta get it made and get it out to the, the fire station for the temporary housing for the, for the crews. And then last but not least, uh, staff vehicles for, for the chiefs, uh, they had three vehicles, one was an expedition- And then last but not least, uh, staff vehicles for, for the chiefs, uh, they had three vehicles, one was an expedition at the end, and then we've got, uh, F two fifty's that, that are in now, and having some work on those. Moving into transportation, CW Matthews is working, they've completed, uh, North Hilton Road, Curory Lane, and they're working now, when I was reporting last week on Big A Road, uh, and we've received their first invoice. So they're, they're moving along very well, and hopefully the weather permitting, they'll continue that. Uh, these, these are just the placeholders for the L-MIG funds. Miguel's telling me we've got about sixteen roads of the L-MIG, uh, resurfacing and being completed this year too. And the second slide is, it's just placeholder for the MAT, uh, for the SLOSS funds for the, uh, L-MIG.
Madam Chair.
Just one question.
Yeah, yeah, we, something you said, just wanted to clarify, because usually we talk about L-MIG, we talk about in road miles. So when I heard you say sixteen roads, was that sixteen miles that we're subdividing once each of commission districts? Or you're saying, what did you just say?
Sixteen roads, not miles, we can, I can get you those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, we, please, I yield.
Riverside Parkway Streetlights, if you remember, we had Nadya Fawcett from Greystone was in last month. We had, we had taken this out, apparently we've got two lights that are not hot, that were connected up with another project. So we put it back in, we're still waiting on their final invoice. Uh, I've been in conversations with him last week, they've assigned a crew to it, uh, but the work, to my knowledge, has not been done and have to receive the invoice. The Lee Road Extension Study is ongoing with Clark Patterson, um, no issues there. Miguel was telling me that, they may, they may need a little more time, I need to update the completion date, obviously. Uh, but they may, it may go towards, uh, the end of the year before they complete that study. And then Stewart Mill Road, Jacobs is, uh, continuing doing the design work on it, they've completed the survey. Um, they're comparing and working with some of the old files that project had laid around for a number of years, but based on conversations we've gotten from them, they have some success with it, and move along very well. They're starting to determine some of the, the right of way impacts for it. Bryant Star Road, John West Road, that's SEI's doing the design for that. Uh, the plan's about ninety-five percent complete, and we're in, uh, we're in the right of way phase, uh, which is in Miguel's office, and there, well, and way to that. Sweetwater Church, um, Doris Road, Pauling County is a, their commission board has approved the IGA, which, uh, we needed that to continue moving forward. Uh, there's only two easements that we're going to be acquiring for this, this intersection now. Douglas County have one, and Pauling don't have one, those should go fairly quickly. They expect to be finalizing plans in November, and then I'm still hoping we're going to have this project let in January, first, first part written on a little sooner. Chapel Hill Road is, is in the preliminary design still, it's about ten percent complete. They're still trying to define the model for that, since we've added the curb and gutter sidewalk on the east side. So once we get those preliminary plans done, Miguel, they'll be, they'll send it over to Miguel for review, and, um, we'll continue moving forward with that project. Highway five, Miguel is working on this, we're getting ready to submit for a request, a proposal for design on it. Um, once he gets it finalized, we'll, we'll get that out on the street. And then the same with Highway ninety-two and Wakey, we still, our plans are to do a, a request for proposal for scoping study on that. Post Road Bridge at Dog River Creek is, uh, GDOT has that moving forward, their contractor is, if you remember, that's been, uh, awarded to a contract, and it's a design deal, and they're moving forward with, with other bridges within the state, and I'll keep you updated on when they're in, in Douglas County. And then finally, in transportation, is the, uh, our sidewalk projects, SEI has these, and they're about ten percent done with the design on. Uh, and they're all following the same track, all three, the Lithia Springs, Chestnut Log, and then Manchester High. Those will all be done concurrently at one time. And then transportation, uh, equipment. I think Miguel's got, he had two pickups and two docks, and we, we've received one of the, the pickups have, have been delivered. No questions, we'll move into, into parks. The, uh, Boundary Waters Concession Restroom was, was designed by Carter and Watkins, and we had a kickoff meeting with Integrated Construction, uh, the board awarded for them to move forward with work with, with that project last month. They're, right now, trying to get all the, everything finalized to get started. Uh, we, uh, they're working with the architect and getting all the materials, some of those already decided upfront. And they'll be get, get started, uh, real soon here. And we've got Boundary Waters Sunfield Lighting, um, has been awarded, and I'm going to set up a meeting with West Georgia Lighting, got that project, and we'll get them started too, they'll be out right beside the construction work going on, on the concession building, and we'll get the lights started real soon, that should be a fairly quick project. Uh, Deerwood Park Tennis Court's still in very preliminary, um, design stage, Carter and Watkins has that. Gary and I, I'll be setting up a meeting soon with them to start looking at some of the visuals on it, and getting up, they don't exactly where they're at, but they are working on it. The multipurpose rec center, we've completed two public, uh, information meetings, on, on September twentieth and then October the eighth. Um, we've obviously got to narrow it down to those three schemes, it looks like it's going to be, uh, based on some of the comments we got back, uh, either scheme two or three, and we're going to be working with Gary and getting, getting the, uh, getting the two schemes in, in front of the, the parks committee for review and decision on moving forward with a particular scheme. Uh, the senior centers, uh, basically the same, they're starting to track close now. Uh, we've done two public, public information meetings, September sixth, and then one, October fourth. We're getting good feedback, uh, on both these projects and good turnout at the public information meetings. Um, we're making some final revisions to the, uh, to the plans. Uh, Carter and Watkins is doing the senior center, and then we'll, we'll, we'll start working with Gary on some dates, get it, get it in front of the, the parks committee. And then the last two is Bill Art and Fair Play, uh, these plans are ready to go to, um, bid. This, this was done by Alan Bell, I'm doing some last minute, um, work with the, the architect on them. Would be ready to go out for, um, out for bid. We need, our plans are right now is to get the bids in for the, the concession building, and then make a decision on some other improvements that we want to try to do around the park. The Fair Play Park Light Replacement, this will go out for advertisement this week for construction. Um, so we're, we're moving forward with that and trying to expedite it. To get, get the pose replaced as soon as we can. And then the last, I think, uh, Miss Lance's equipment for Gary, pretty much everything is in that he's, he's ordered this year, so we're in pretty good shape and, uh, and utilizing the monies that we have for, for his equipment. And then with that, I'll close, and open for any questions.
Any questions from the board, Commissioner, Commissioner Markier?
Question, and this may be more appropriate for our county administrator, but, uh, referencing the IGA, intergouvernemental services or intergovernmental agreement, uh, with the city and the, uh, tower, digital radio tower. This, this is a, a crucial project for everybody in the, in the county, regardless inside the city limits or outside the city limits. What's, what's the issue, what's the whole?
We're talking about it in the executive session today.
Ooh, okay. Maybe that's a good sign. I yield back.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm going to come back to just one topic, the, the Lee Road mastiff plan. You said it may go into the, the first of year, repeat that one more time.
Yeah, we have, we have projected, you know, we, we, we actually increased the scope of that project initially from a, a small area at Lee Road and, uh, ninety-two. We expanded the scope, uh, increased the scope of, uh, for their study, and they have projected around September, October to complete.
Right.
Both studies, but that's, that's going, you know, people for chiming on it, but it's, it looks like it's going to be towards, uh, November, December before that completed.
The reason I bring that, you said December, so you, you gotta be careful with dates, because it, you know, send them wrong. Uh, because I heard December, or the first of the year.
Yeah.
And, and so, my comment is that this, this area is important, we, we've got, um, our senior statesman is going to be leaving here. And I, I, I would like, the senior wrong way, but y'all got my point.
Oh.
The, the point is that, um, that input is necessary, so I'd like to know, if you said, if they said that the scope and work would take to the end of the year, I'd like to know why is it changing, what is happening? Um, but at the same point, if there needs to be a parallel assurance that input can be gained while we've got a sitting commissioner, because our two areas touching this area, that has to happen, that was the whole point of expanding that. So I, I don't want, I mean, they said they committed to it, so I need to have an accounting for it, well, why is it changing? But also to assure that we can get the input, just in case it is reasonable that we should shift. But I don't want that to just like, oh, we couldn't get to it, my bad, because you overpromised to get an expanded scope of work, not you, but you get my point. Can you take care of that for us, please?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Guyer?
Yes, ma'am, um, Miguel, have you been talking to the owner of the, the shopping center at Highway five and Douglas Boulevard? They do know that we're going to be.
I've had discussions.
We're interested in part of that property.
Yes.
That's got a for sale sign on it, so they are aware of that, uh, in case they find a buyer for the lot. Uh, the RFP, the, um, how long will that take?
Probably sometime in, in November.
November, uh, and this will do the, uh, kind of layout what is required for that, uh, intersection?
That would be to analyze the area and determine the extent of the turn lane, how far back it needs to go.
And at that time, that's when we'll start negotiating with the property, right? After we get the RFP?
Well, we, we can't negotiate until the, the design is well underway, so we know exactly what the area that we're going to need is. So it's going to take some, it's going to take the RFP, well, first is another few, um, and then it's going to take a little bit of design to establish the, how far back the, the lane is going to go. And then they got, they have to start putting together the plans before we know how wide and exactly how far back. So it's probably going to be sometime into, uh, the first quarter of next year before we define exactly what will be needed.
Okay, and, uh, the Lee Road expansion, where, where does it fall on the SLOSS list?
The study is part of the SLOSS.
Where, where is it?
It's in, it's under the, um, economic development category.
Yeah, if, if I may, what, uh, initially, uh, the small area study, uh, was intended to be completed by October. And it was expanded, and they, they thought that perhaps they could get it wrapped up by about the same time. They've realized that they weren't able to do that, however, we do not anticipate that it will go beyond this year before they submit a, a report of the entire area. And, and in terms of where, where is it, uh, in, in?
I said it was under economic development.
Yeah, it is, it is as a lump sum under economic development.
So what all falls under economic development? I thought that was to, uh, when industries come in and we have to maybe cut the driveway or something like that, I thought that's what that was for.
Well, it, it is that too, uh, but, uh.
But we, if we're going to spend it on other things that wasn't intended on, that'd be spent on, will we have it left?
Well, Commissioner, at this point, the, um, the initial expenditure is for the study, for the analysis. So that is a very defined scope. What decisions fall from that is subject for discussion by the board as to how those funds are allocated. At this point, uh, the only allocation has been for the study itself, so seventy-five thousand dollars for that element of the study.
And let's go back to, um, the parks and rec, and I was reading the minutes of the, uh, parks and rec, and they were talking about the overrun of Scheme Three of the concession stand at Boundary Waters and, no, Senior Center, Senior Center, I'm sorry. Uh, in the tune of one point two million. When you say scheme, did y'all, y'all are offering three different drawings, and you're letting the people pick the drawings, or what?
And you had it correct, it's the rec center, somebody.
Rec center, I'm sorry.
So what we ended up doing, the initial, um, thought about what needed to go in the rec center, is what we're trying to make sure we get out to the public, plus all the comments we've, that's coming in. But the reality of the, what the construction cost is now, about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, it, the cost has grown. I mean, we're still trying to, we're still trying to build what was originally, I think, the initial scope of it. So we, the, the architect thought it'd be a good idea to come up with these schemes. And one is just a basic, uh, building with the simplest full paint you can get, that, that you could build it just under the budget. The second one is a little bit more trying to achieve the original scope, and it's just, it's actually above the, the budget, of the original budget. And then the third is the, is what had, uh, the original thought, that the program rooms that were, that were needed and walking tracks, um, it's, it's about a million, one point two million over the.
But when we did the, uh, John Blakeley Building over here, the Board of Commissioners just offered a, a, a drawing, and we really only had one choice. Uh, when you put, uh, I can see what needs to go in there then, uh, maybe to the public. But we, do we put on there the budget and what we have to build within that budget? Um, when you take one point two million away from, um, from the overall parks and rec, you're taking the bottom list of the, uh, parks and rec projects, which are the other side of the county. You're taking away the money that was supposed to be for them. Everybody, everywhere I go, they're saying, why is all the construction over on the eastern side of the county? Uh, we need to let people think that, that their dollar, that one cent on the dollar is going for the whole county and not just a special portion of the county. And so I would urge the, uh, Parks and Recs Committee not to want to go over a budget one point two million dollars that's going to take away from the projects that are being, uh, that people think they're getting in their parks on the other side of the county. And, um, just kind of realize, we represent, when we have our vote here, we're voting the overall good of the county and not just a certain section of the county. So, uh, one point too, when I saw that they were talking about it may do away with Winston, uh, the field at Winston or the Post Road, and, you know, that's my district, and I need to speak up, we deserve some of this money. Thirteen million of it's going west, I mean, east of ninety-two. Only less than two million is going on the western side. So I yield back.
But we did try, we, I think Architect and along with Gary's staff, they did a very good job of, of making sure everybody, when we presented it, of the four plans and the, and we actually had on the displays, the cost, the size of, you know, this mountain square footage. So the, when the comments came in, everybody, you know, realized what the cost was and, and the size of building that was going to result in.
Well, you may have to cut down the size.
And that's, that's, that's the whole thing, that's the whole purpose of the schemes.
And that's, um, like when I built my house, I. And that's, like when I built my house, I built within my budget. I knew what my budget was before I approved the plans for my house. And I think we, we do it backwards. We pick a scheme or we pick a floor plan, I guess that and the other, and then look to see what it's going to cost to build that. We always set our budget, then build in accordance to the budget.
And that's where, and no decisions been.
With consideration for inflation, I'm not saying that building costs has not gone up.
And that is one thing that we're, we're climbing uphill with. You know, these budgets were set back in, Gary Kirk, if I'm wrong, several years ago. And it's, you really, you've got that you're dealing with, plus the, the driving of the economy. It's really escalated as far as the, the low estimates at the time. And then what building material and labor is running right now. And that's going to affect everything.
I understand about inflation, well, the fact that there's work out there for people.
Yeah, which is good.
And they raise the prices of them. But just remember that we represent the whole county and not just east of ninety-two. And I yield back.
Okay, thank you. We can move on. Commissioner Mitchell has one comment, then we'll move on.
And I'll be pretty quick and brief, but yes, we have taken into consideration the entire county. Yes, we understand that the cost of construction, the real numbers, all the real numbers. So between Maul Care and myself, we've actually, you know, it's going to be a unique moment of trying to figure out which direction we go in wanting. The good part is we've got some direction of some sort, which is good. My only, my only question is though, you mentioned the sidewalks, the sidewalk projects. Are we, you kind of looked at that pretty quick, are we, with Livia Springs and the sidewalk, are they done or are they?
No, we're about, we only about ten steps done with the design.
Okay.
So we're, but he's expecting by the, within three months to have the design completed. You know, they're small projects.
Right, 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 right.
But right now, they're still in the preliminary design stage. They just completed the surveys of all three schools. Everything's going well, no, no unexpected things have come up. And once we get the design done, if we get some estimates in, we can make a decision, best, the best way to put them out for bid.
Yeah, okay, but we're moving it right along, the projects are moving right along. But just in closing, the Parks and Rec Oversight Committee kind of takes the holistic approach. It's not just about one side of the county or the other. It's just that here are some projects that are lined up and possibly ready to go. Costs have increased substantially. If we had did this project maybe what, like what a year or two ago, we probably could have cut the cost by a third at least. However, we'll face with the reality, construction costs have gone up, labor costs have gone up. And, and the determination will not be based on what side of the county it's on. It'll be based on the project itself, understanding kind of what's best for the project and what's, what's the quality approach to the project itself.
Just leave stuff for us.
And I think we, we're all concerned about that, but we, we understand if, if we take more of the pie on the top end to get a quality project. It may be some that may or may not make the list or, you know, get down to that list. We, that's all within the scope of what we're trying to deal with and we understand that. Okay, so I yield back.
Just one, just put it, because he didn't answer the one question we needed. All right, so to this whole conversation, this is to the county administrator. So Mark, we asked, we're in our last meeting with us, a reset or refresh based on, we had estimates going into Wall Street. Remember, we, we came up with percentages, that's what the public knows. There's nothing else committed beyond what was that. All of us might have floated a project that we thought that we could offer up to the public, but we sold only percentages. And we offered up, maybe we need a fire station, we needed a tower. Nothing else was sold to the public, nothing, that's important. But now that we've gotten in this, Mark, you created a list to sort of justify the spend, right? We went to Wall Street, we had to come up with this master list of what, seventy million dollars to a hundred million dollars worth of projects with priorities. We've now gotten into this two years, there's been inflation both in labor and in construction costs. We all recognize this. What I'd like, what we asked for, Mark, and I know you've been out, we asked for was a reset based on, okay, now we need to reset these numbers so we can set expectations. We're having these conversations and we're having to keep recalibrating from a vote perspective on each project. Just reset the list based on like, everything is inflated now, it's more, I mean, and that's okay. So what was on the list at the bottom, we know that, we, we didn't guarantee that we were going to deliver this. But let's not be delusional about, look, guys, it's already inflated. My concern is that we blew our budget as relates to what, about two million dollars in, in transportation, Mike?
Yeah.
Because of bad estimates. We blew it by two million, right? We already had this experience, we're not going to experience this again on this one, so let's go ahead and reset that. I know Mark was out, but can we get that refreshed, Mark?
I seen it about two weeks ago, I can resend it.
No, it's not, it's with that, you gotta bring it to the public. We need to make sure that, okay, now you send it, can we have a public conversation about this list and what it's going to be? I don't want it to be offline, I want a public conversation, manager.
Okay, we do, yeah, okay, thank you. Mr. Gaita, Gaito, thanks so much. Board of Commissioners, you have your approval of the minutes for the market. The creek of those and be prepared to approve. We have three proclamations tomorrow as well, so be prepared to approve those as well. And a public hearing tomorrow, we have a public hearing. And that public hearing will be led by Director Watson. And it really don't need to get into it unless you want to come and just give us a few words, just kind of give us a little, we just digest, Commissioner. And then next I'll move into, I'll talk to the county administrator about this, okay?
Yes, ma'am. For the public hearing tomorrow, we'll have a brief PowerPoint presentation. And I want everybody to know that the public hearing that we will have tomorrow and at the next commission meeting will be about the basics of the application, the technical aspect, the content of it, the requirements of the application. We will talk very much about the bus service, the routes, things like that during the public hearings. This information will come a few weeks later in a series of, of public meetings. We're very close to firming up some things such as, as the routes. Tomorrow at the Transportation Committee meeting, we're going to be talking about what our one-way fare might be. And we're also in the process of reviewing the draft contract that our proposed third-party provider has submitted to us. So, so again, tomorrow during this public hearing, it's going to be very basic about the application itself.
Okay, we look forward to the public hearing tomorrow, thank you so much, Director Watson. County Administrator, do you have any business?
Yes, ma'am. Just want to let the public know that we sent a five hundred kilowatt generator to Calhoun County in South Georgia and it is running an entire neighborhood. We seen any other equipment?
Yes, sir, a small generator, they went and they are powering a water system with it, I think. In, not Glendale County, uh, Miller County.
So another small generator in Miller County to help with their water system.
Excellent. Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next we have business items and Board of Commissioners, we will start, we start with page number eight. Authorization to give a notice of intent to the Georgia Department of Education to apply for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty, physical year twenty. Cohort to expand the Solicitor's Office reading program and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. No matching funds are required. Solicitor General Matthew Prohl is here to present.
My name is Chair, Board of Commissioners, thank you for having me this morning. When I became solicitor six years ago, I actually have Lynn Obis, who's my Director of Victim Services, with me today. She is a, she's the owner of two greyhounds from the Birmingham racetrack. Not that she's a dog breeder, but she cares for greyhounds and these greyhounds are retired dogs that raced over in Birmingham. And what they do is, she's part of a group called the Greyhound Rescue Group. And what they do is they take these greyhounds, they get them trained to be therapy dogs. And once they become therapy dogs, then she's involved with another group called Reading Paws. And they get them certified as reading therapy dogs. And we have had a reading therapy dog in my office through the ownership of Lynn since I've been solicitor. And we use that therapy dog in different manners. We've used it within the court system to talk to some of our child victims when they have been faced with having to testify in court. But one of the main jobs that Cleo, her dog, her first reading therapy dog did is that we use her to reach out to pre-K programs, elementary schools, churches, organizations. And the whole goal of it was to encourage children to read. And this program is moving along because I think reading is fundamental, reading is important, especially in what I do. And I'm going to give you some information on that. Many of you know in two thousand, in April of this year, I was appointed to the State Board of Education by Governor Deas to represent our district. And I will mention that on October twenty-ninth at seven P M. at Douglas County High School, I'm having my annual district meeting. So I encourage you all to come out there, the information's going out to the Board of, Department of Education right now. I've had an opportunity to speak with many educators about this program and my goal is to expand the program. And I have expanded the program, I have done presentations throughout the state on this program and why it's important. And I'm going to give you a little bit of information today. Why are we concerned? Sixty-six percent of third graders in Georgia are not reading proficiently, that's what the statistics show. Most recent statistics show sixty-six percent of third graders, when they're assessed that they're not reading proficiently on grade level. Why is that important? Well, two-thirds of our students in Georgia aren't reading proficiently, that's going to be a major indicator. They're more likely to experience poor health, have discipline problems, become teen parents and drop out of high school. That's why it's important that we need to be concerned about that number. Why is a prosecutor concerned about this? And I'm going to tell you why. According to Department of Justice, seventy percent of our prison population can't read at the fourth grade level. So if sixty-six percent of our third graders can't read proficiently, and you take that out to the adult age, seventy percent of our prison population can't read at the fourth grade level. More than sixty percent of prison population are functionally illiterate. And eighty-five percent of all juveniles who interface with juvenile court system are functionally illiterate. Now, that's Judge Walker's department, but it should concern assault. And it should concern me too, as a citizen, as a prosecutor. Because those that we see in the juvenile court system, we could see them in the adult court system. So let's compare, third grade population in Georgia in March of two thousand sixteen was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Sixty-six percent of those is ninety-one thousand. So ninety-one thousand of our third graders can't read proficiently on grade level, okay? Our Georgia prison populations, local prison and parole total was a hundred and twenty-one thousand in two thousand sixteen. Seventy percent is eighty-four thousand. That's a pretty close number, that's only six thousand, seven thousand, that's a seven, oh, six thousand, three hundred difference in, in people. So we take these numbers and I argue, that's not a coincidence, that's a correlation. So what is our outreach now? Our goal is to get children excited about reading, all right? So I said, okay, what am I going to do? I'm going to put something together, and I started putting something together six years ago because I don't want to see people in criminal justice system. I'm tired of seeing the same people over and over again. I'm tired of seeing the same families over and over again. So instead of just prosecuting people, saying, you should do this, here, go to jail, go to probation. That obviously isn't working because their families are still coming back, so we need to do something. And I took a call myself to do something. We're going to encourage these children to read through a non-traditional tool, which is a dog. We collaborate with individual schools during reading days with Cleo. And many of you heard earlier this year, we partnered with Winston Elementary. And we identify first and second graders, this is not willy-nilly. We were at first, just, we got it off the ground, we were willy-nilly, just going to different schools and different organizations and encouraging children to read. Now we're actually doing analytics. And we're partnering with, our first school was Winston Elementary, we started this year. And we partnered with them and the educators at Winston Elementary identify the first and second graders who are not on pace with their peers. Who when we get to the third grade, we're going to say, okay, these third graders are probably not likely going to be reading proficiently at grade level. So we're going to identify them before they get to the third grade. Let's identify them in the first grade and the second grade. Because you know, when I was, when I was first got in the Solicitor's Office, okay, let's get in the high school and tell the kids about the criminal justice system. We realized that that was a little bit too late. And then Brian Ford, when he's a solicitor, he's, I'm going to go into middle school, so go into middle school, now, it's kind of too late. So as a solicitor, I'm trying to get to pre-K and K through three to get these children to read on grade level. So we've identified these students and what the way the program at Winston works is that the educators identify these children and they encourage them to read because obviously they're not getting the support maybe at home. Maybe there's a, a learning deficiency or a learning disability that we need to identify these children. And they're not getting the support at home to read. So what we're using is this non-traditional tool. And their teachers are saying, hey, this is what we're going to do. We're going to encourage you to read because if you read and you read more books than your classmates, you're going to get a special prize. And that special prize is to get the read of Cleo on the last Friday of the month. So Lynn, on the last Friday of the month, she takes Cleo and she goes to Winston Elementary and they identify six students for that month that have been lagging behind their peers. But they have working, been working harder and improving. And then they get the read of both of Cleo, and Cleo doesn't read the book. I know everybody asks, does Cleo read? Cleo doesn't read. Cleo just sits there and is nonjudgmental, doesn't bully them, doesn't make fun of them. Cleo just sits there and listens to them read. And the improvement, and Lynn, I gotta give a shout out to her. She does this on her free time on the weekends, she goes to all three of our libraries and does reading programs. And you should see the kids, especially the kids that are on the autism spectrum, how their parents bring them and they really improve over a period of month because they're getting this opportunity to read and not be judged by their peers. All they have is a sweet greyhound that does this. So we're going to expand this program to other schools. It's really worked, we've done it for about three months and we did a, a day. We had all the first and second graders come to the media center at Winston Elementary. And it was probably one of the most exciting days I've had in the last six years of my, I mean, I had two hundred, first and second graders or a hundred first and second graders just come and we wrote a book to them and Cleo was there and they were so happy. And it really made their day. So these children that are lagging behind, they're going to get this opportunity, but we're going to expand this to none of the other schools. And how are we going to do it? We're going to use the data from the Department of Education, from the Georgia Department of Education. We have tons and tons and tons of data. And we're going to identify those schools that are, have the most, have the readers that are struggling the most. And we're going to go to those schools first. Whether it's Eastside or Burnett or Netwind, we're going to go to these schools or North Douglas. Where these schools are that we have higher rates of, of children struggling at the third grade reading, and we want to expand. And we're going to move systematically through each one of our schools and expand this program. Now, I need people and I need some help and I've got a tool and I've got a secret weapon and I'm going to do that. If we get this grant, I'm going to move into that. So that's what we want to do, this grant is a, through the Department of Education. It's for active school programs, it's for other programs and you can, private agencies or private organizations and government entities, which I'm going to apply for it through the Board of Commissioners. And we want to expand this program, we want to do some exciting things. I have to do, the reason it's before you today, the grant's not due until January thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. But I have to do a, a letter of intent or notice of intent that I'm going to apply on October, by October thirty-first. So that's why it's here today. And I appreciate you indulging me, allowing me to put this on the agenda so we can get this, because we really need to do this. The whole point is, why are we doing this? When these children in the first and second grade, we don't want to see them in our court system twelve, thirteen years later. We want them in jobs, we want them raising families, we want them buying houses and, and spending tax dollars instead of using tax dollars. They want to give, not spending tax, but giving to the taxes instead of spending tax dollars in the criminal justice system. That's one way we can help do this and, and one of the programs that I've started doing and I'm really excited about it. And I hope you all will support me in this endeavor. Now, let me give you the real deal. The Read Program is a national certification founded in nineteen ninety-nine and the mission is to improve literacy skill of children through assistance of registered therapy teams and literacy mentors. We've got to get some volunteers to be literacy, uh, literary therapy teams. And Lynn's going to work with me with her organization, but I will give you, I'm not the star of the show when I show up. Let me show you who the star of the show is. Third playoff.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's a, there's one day, you can see how excited the children are. This is over at Sheltering Arms over on Longview Drive, we do their, we, we're a regular show over there. We come a lot and the children as well. And these are some links if y'all want to do that. And I'll submit this to Ms. Watson so y'all can have it in your minutes and you'll have the information.
Okay, thank you so much. I've missed the guy that will be upcoming, but thank you for engaging.
Matt, y'all never reached out to like the life groups at church, churches? Because they like to be involved in the community. And several of them, especially the older people, they would probably go up to the schools and have a child read to them. I had a third grade teacher as a very close friend and she got me to. And a lot of it, they just. And a lot of it, they just need practice. They just need to read to someone. And a lot of the churches may have some life groups that could help them with that.
We have, we've actually gone into churches ourselves as a team, Lynn and I have. We've offered it. We go through CORE, CORE, the people in CORE, they've engaged with us to get us in churches. But we definitely reach out to all churches.
Because this doesn't cost anything, it just takes time.
The cost, the really, the cost, what is time? And really what you have to have is you have to get a therapy team, which means it is an owner of a dog who is a therapy dog, and a person willing to step up and say, okay, I'm going to do this on a regular basis. If y'all have been involved with any kind of organizations, it's always the hardest part is to get people to volunteer to do things. So by doing this, we're going to do some non-traditional things, not just with a therapy dog, but we're going to use CLEO as the showcase, as the crown jewel. But at the end of the day, there's going to be some other stuff through this program that we're going to all shoot through this time. But we'll, we'll definitely reach out to these churches and life groups.
My life group, I've got a retired principal and two teachers.
I'm going to get in contact with you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. We're going to tap number nine, authorization to create a new position with the Information Services Department, titled Networking System Security Manager, Director Martin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, so what we want to do here is actually, and the reason is before the Board of Commissioners is, the Networking System Security Manager is not a position that has been in the Information Services Department before. I think we all recognize the need for additional insight and focus on cybersecurity within the county. October will be a National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Do you train? We, we think now is a good time to present this. This actually went through the Technology Committee. One of the things that we wanted to look at during the Technology Committee was, is it, is the right thing to do to hire an employee? Or is the right thing for us to do to go out and look at a service where service might add some benefit above hiring an employee? The reality of it is, it's just not within the scope of finances for us right now. And we think this is a good first step to start getting us on track for being a little more secure. Another reason that he's going for the committee is, everybody's agendas, the agenda items should include the new board chart. So this will actually allow us the opportunity to do a slight reorganization with the ITU Department so that we're really putting an emphasis on cybersecurity based not only on our individuals, but actually on our structure. So, any questions?
Commissioner Guy.
It's not really a question, but Judge Emerson came to the Constitutional Office as he retreat last week, and he spoke on the dire need for us to be protected, our information to be protected. We had Calweda County's Act, Fulton County's Act, and there's another local.
City of Savannah.
Huh?
City of Savannah was one recently.
Yeah. So this is very, very important because, and it's not just, one thing that you pointed out to the committee, it's not just the millennial that's sitting in the basement of their parents. It's corporations now that are doing this. They're hacking into this for, to hold people hostage or for ransom and things like that. But they can do so much damage. Everybody remembers what happened in Blue Clark, I mean Anthem, Anthem was hacked. And what they did to many of our own employees, they got their tax return and their refund sent to them rather than to the employee. So this is something badly needed, and it's revenue neutral for 2018. And how much will it add for 2019?
The additional employee and the other things involved in the restructure will increase our salary budget by $24,000 for 2019.
For the 2019?
Yes.
All right.
But it's neutral for 2019.
Thank you for bringing this to us, and I appreciate everything that Judge Emerson shared at our retreat the other day. Because this is a very, he's a big concern of his. He says if we lost our data, it would, you know, just play havoc in the county, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Guy. Thank you so much. So I won't have any other questions if you still need, if you have any questions. Did I have any questions? Did you raise your hand?
I did.
I'm so sorry, I didn't see your hand. You have to raise it now. We have one from Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm careful. Yeah, no, thank you. I'm careful with our commentary. Like, there's some things that are, you think about national security, that they are what they are. All right, so I'll be careful with my comments. But in your mind, and your response is going to be appropriate, in your mind, on how important this is for us to pursue? When you talk about vulnerability and that type of conversation, right? Americans don't tell our enemies that, oh, you can come down here and come through this back path, right? Think about the movie 300, right? You don't do that. My question, so I'm, but I need to know for the public that, okay, is this, in your mind, as the chief person of our technology, how important is this on a scale of one to 10? Is this important?
It's an absolute 10, right? Because I think she touched on it. It used to be, the perception was that there was probably some overweight guy sitting in the basement somewhere, right? Or some foreign group of youth.
Put the color to the side, put the anecdote to the side. I'm asking a very straight, like.
Yeah, this is, there's a software development lifecycle that lives around hacking now. It is pulled off by very, you know, very well organized, very sophisticated organizations. It's no longer something that we can pretend that we're working hard on. It's something we have to focus on, we have to spend money on, or else we're not doing our citizens or our employees.
Right, right. So, and again, I'm not looking for actual data quantified, but have there been attempts on us? Like, our borders, like, that's, that's important for me.
Every day.
To support something like this.
Every day.
Okay. What do you have?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll just, I'll just add, and my apologies for standing on this one. But why don't you share with them, because we went through this whole committee structure and vetted this to make sure that what we're doing was in the best interest of the county and our technology. So I think this is a huge step in the right direction, even though I challenged them with the big guy, the guy in the back room doing all these things. But your structure would definitely give us a focus on that particular vulnerability that we could encounter. But we don't, but we could encounter.
Right, so I'll try and, our, the way we handle cybersecurity right now is, is a part of multiple people's job that they do in addition to what their regular job is, right? And so it's not anybody's primary responsibility. Most of the people we have right now are worried, more, they're more concerned with break fixing. You can't do something, somebody can't work, something's not operationally where it needs to be. We're focused on those things, and when we have time, we spend time working on security. And the world has progressed beyond that, but we have not. And so the point of this is to put security out front and actually to restructure ourselves in such a way that things funnel through the lens of security before we ever start the project in technology.
And so that structure will be, just given a little outlook of your organizational chart, would consider this, that person, and that person for sure focused in on just that situation alone?
Correct. And then the functional groups within our department, like networking and sysadmin, who currently have part of the responsibility, they would actually report through this new position. That way, when we're building new equipment or building new infrastructure, the first thing we're thinking about is, are we configuring it to be safe? Are we configuring it to be secure? Not, but we're doing it quickly. And so I think it's important that at a high level within our organization, we put somebody who has security experience, security focus, and security education so that we make sure that those are focal points of the way we do things, not extra things that we do when we have time.
And let's make it clear, this is not 100% proof, so don't, don't, don't get yourself, get your mind twisted. But at least we're trying to go in the right direction as to what that could be in the event that we were hacked, if we were in that position and needed to kind of do something. We're trying to be proactive, we're now doing these types of things.
Correct.
Yeah, so, last but not least, will you be sending out any, any pizza coupons or?
At least twice a week.
Something you could call for.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, one thing we, y'all may want to do is have Matt LeVern look at our policies of insurance because now cyber insurance, cybersecurity insurance, especially from a technological standpoint. The city of Atlanta's learned a very hard way about replacing equipment and whatnot, and the infrastructure costs and capital would be devastating to our budget. We may want to have Matt look at, what do we have in place of anything?
We already looked at those.
Right, we actually, Matt did have some coverage in our policy leading up to this year. We discussed it at length beginning this year, and I think we did expand that policy. But it's not to say, that was also kind of anecdotal, and I think that's an important thing about getting somebody on our staff who has experience and education in this. Because then there's a lot more educated conversation that can be had between Matt and this person. When I was coming up through technology, viruses and those things were actually kind of fun, right? When somebody got one, you laughed at them, and you spent time trying to fix it because it wasn't that big a deal, right? Now, that's completely changed, right? This is a business for people, and we need to treat it that way.
Okay.
Explain, explain why it's a business.
You make money doing it.
Yeah, it's ransom, you assist them to lock up until you pay somebody.
Well, is that, they lock them down to get money? I mean, there's an amazing black market for social security numbers, for credit card numbers, and that black market exists, and people are making a ton of money doing it. So they built businesses around it.
And they can also assist the competitors.
Yeah, there's that aspect.
How do you feel about it?
Yeah, to the county attorney's point, when this first, when I got, I saw this was coming, I did ask the question of the administration, which is, what happens when the bomb goes off? And how do we get back online? We don't have the general fund that Atlanta has. We, we, we just don't. And so we can't be delusional about, like, we can't take a hit like this. I know we pay cash as we go, but, I mean, to your point, Ken, with, you know, catastrophic, you know, reinsurance, something above and beyond, because we got to keep the system working. And so even if technologically you can get it done, and again, I'm not going to get into our strategy, but I guess I had not heard yet that while Matt had looked at it, does the Board of Commissioners need to sign up on the thresholds for that new insurance provision here? That's my question.
Well, I think it probably needs to get a report from the county administrator on what the status of that coverage is, depending.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Guy.
Right. I was watching Mark Levine last night, but he, they were, he had a guest man on there, and I can't think of his name. But he was talking about microbes. I can't even remember what, cyber castle or something like that. It's going to be safer than the internet. That you, you can't get all this information from, from the internet. If you hack this place, it's not going to give you all this other stuff. So, and it's going to do away with passwords, praise the Lord for that. But it's kind of, it's a new thing that's coming, and it's already started. It's out there, it just hasn't come all the way across the continents and everything. But have, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I'm not sure, I'm exactly sure what you're talking about, but I think.
Cryptos.
Also, for people, oh, so you're talking about.
Micro, crypto or something like that.
I mean, there's cryptocurrency, there's BitLocker, and there's a lot of stuff that's being done with that. But I, it'll be interesting, the thing that people, if you're a real computer nerd, right? Quantum computing, right? So quantum computing is one of the things that people are moving forward with right now. Doesn't quite work yet, but as soon as they sort out quantum computing, nothing we currently do for security is going to be worth anything. It'll be able to break encryption so fast, once it's, once this is developed, and it's, and we're on the cusp of developing quantum computing. Nothing we currently do will be valuable at all for security.
This man was saying this is going to be so much safer. It's going to be so much safer because you don't have all the passwords and stuff like that. And I thought it was very interesting. You might can watch it on your computer or something.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Harvard Brad, written a lot of books and everything about the internet. He said Google's going to be, just nothing after this comes in place. Because Google was, it was all set up just for email, you know?
Right.
Talking about your family and stuff like that. And there was never any security out there until we started having problems. But it's very interesting.
You have that. Thank you. We'll move right along. Thank you so much, Mr. Martin. Next, we have tap number 10, authorization to move the budget and accept the grant award in the amount of $852,536 for enhancements to our Family Treatment Court program, requiring a 25% in-kind match, which covers salary and benefits for our peer support specialists, as well as our office space and equipment and office management, signing all related documents. This is Matt Day, how he just made.
We, Jill Hopson and I worked on writing this grant. Didn't have any idea we'd end up getting it. There were only four grants awarded throughout the nation for this particular project. So we got $852,356. It is a grant that is for four years. We are able to match with our in-kind and our current employees, so there's not any additional funds that are needed for our match. We are targeting our Family Treatment Court, where we work with parents that have deprivation cases filed within the court. And we work intensively with those families for two years when they're enrolled in our program. This is going to double our capacity to serve clients. We currently have about 20 families that we work with. And we'll be able to hire an additional case manager. And a peer support specialist has already been hired to work with them.
Very, very good. Any comment from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Moore, here.
I noticed this is, this is over a four-year period.
Yes, sir.
Do they, do they parse out the disbursements, or do you get the money upfront? Or they just, you get a check every year for four years? Do you know?
We expand the funds and provide reports.
Okay.
Quarterly, and that will take place through the whole grant cycle.
Okay, thank you. How do you feel?
I believe it's one of the largest grants you've received, so.
It is.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Mrs. Day. We'll move on to tap number 11, authorization to purchase a ticket office machine for the Douglas County Transportation Center to be used for the sale of Breeze cards for the state roads and tollway authority express bus service. Director Watson.
Yes, ma'am. I have some good news about this tab, but first let me give you a little background. Ever since around 2003, 2004, when the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority started the express, express bus service into Atlanta, we've been selling their magnetic strip cards with their branding on it. However, times are changing, technology is changing. Greta, which is now merged with the state roads and tollway authority, they're starting to sell Breeze cards instead of their old magnetic strip cards. For us to sell these cards, we're going to need, the Breeze cards, we're going to need a change in technology, and that's the ticket office machine. A rider of the express bus service will be able to come into the transportation center and purchase a Breeze card from us. Now, once we get this machine, at least in the beginning, we'll only be able to load the Breeze cards with Serta packages, programs. You will not be able to purchase martyr products on our ticket office machine to begin with. That, that may occur in the future, but at least for the beginning, the ticket office machine will only be able to serve express bus customers. Now, for the good news, when we first started discussions with Serta about this, the price of the ticket office machine and the installation was $26,000. And they wanted Douglas County to put $16,000 of the bill. Well, we've been back and forth, had a lot of negotiations with Serta on this. And the bottom line is now that they're going to purchase the machine. and the bottom line is now that they're going to purchase the machine for us and pay all the installation costs. So, so I don't, this morning, I don't need authorization from you to, to purchase the machine, and I don't know if I need authorization from you to allow them to install the machine in our facility. Maybe the County Administrator or a county attorney can ask that, but, but we're ready to move forward with the installation of the machine.
County Administrator, can you respond?
I haven't seen any paperwork that's required. Is there anything required from, from Serta?
No, no, they, they have the machine installed, and they're ready to come and install it now. We, there, there hasn't been any, any paperwork, any written formal agreement.
I have an existing machine. The old machine is there anyway already, right?
All we have now is a debit credit card machine.
Okay.
Gary, I missed what the question was. I apologize. But if it's a donation, is that what I heard? If it's a donation, it has to be received on the minutes of the county, so it has to go on agenda to receive a donation. So, there's disclosure of who's donating, what's being received, and what its purpose is.
It would be Serta installing a ticket office machine in the transportation center for the purpose of selling breeze cards.
Do you, do you need it on for tomorrow? We can put it on for new business tomorrow if you need it?
Well, he already has.
Yeah.
Is it covered in this agenda?
They're, they're ready to move on.
Well, you just need a letter that comes with it, that they're installed, so there's not a presumption that we have to pay for after the fact. You know what I'm saying? You need something from them, saying we're donating X, Y, and Z, including the labor for installation, blah, 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 so that there's a record in the, in the county system with the perp of the county, and we don't get a bill later where, oh, that, we misunderstood what you were saying. It needs to be in writing, whatever it is.
Okay. I don't know that I can get that, that kind of more.
Well, we don't need to receive it. We can go ahead and prove it, but we don't need to receive it until we got something in writing. Okay?
Okay, so can we, can we say they will install it subject to a written agreement, or something like that?
Well, I don't think you need a written agreement. I think they're done, it's coming in as a donation, correct? Is that?
Well, what's on the agenda is authorization to purchase, but then, since the agenda item was added, Gary found out that the item will be donated.
Well, let's just take the word purchase out and be donated by Serta or whoever.
Okay.
And that's what's being approved, and if it changes, we'll have to come back to the board.
Okay. That works.
Any other comments?
Mr. Robinson, I believe you had something.
I just want to frame this, that, confirm, Mark and Gary, we did discuss this in our transportation committee. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir.
In discussing this, we did not make a recommendation, because we agreed to bring to the full Board of Commissioners. Is that accurate?
Yes.
We didn't make a recommendation to?
We made a recommendation to bring it to the Board of Commissioners.
Correct.
Correct. So, there was no recommendation from the transportation, because I thought this was a broader comment, because my, my point of not having it at the lower level was, it was, it was more of a, does it fulfill the ultimate goal of continuity of travel? Right? If it wasn't so much about, I'm swiping, or it's a cheap product, or we've got a better play, the question is, now, listen, and Gary knows, looking at you like, okay, so you can't get marginalized, but I need to get from where I am across the region, right? And so, what you're saying, and I want to make sure that the public is hearing this, and we can bring this up at some other time, but I want to be real clear, that even with the acceptance of this, if it doesn't fulfill the functionality, in other words, like, well, why didn't we go with the full product offering that was, I was in the presentation? Why didn't we go with that versus this? I know this was the cheaper route, but does it fulfill me my continuity of travel, so that when I go over to Cobb County, right on that line, am I able to keep going? Don't worry about homes. My question is, can I get on right there, where we, where we're supposed to be in these conversations, that it has to continue? Can I use this card to get on that CCT and keep going east? That's what I want to know.
The, the answer to that is, is yes, sort of. And let, and let me explain, explain that. The, clients will be able to purchase the breeze card at our location. We can, in our location, at least to begin with, we will only be able to load it with Serta products. However, the client can take that breeze card that they purchased at our location and go online or at a MARTA location in Atlanta and load MARTA products on that. So, once, Commissioner, to your point, once they purchase the card at our location, then they can go online and add MARTA products, or once they're in Atlanta, use a MARTA machine to upload MARTA products onto that card. So, yes, once they do that, there isn't continuity from you being able to go from Douglas County to anywhere in Atlanta using that one card.
All right, so I, I got that, and I appreciate that, and if I got my breeze card, I can, I go to homes. Fine. You didn't answer the question. The partnership and agreement, the condition of the whole goal was that we would work with Cobb. My question is, can we use this product to get on CCT? Will they accept the Serta product? That's all I'm asking. That right there. Can we continue to home, to get homes, to get Atlanta? The agreement that we agreed to was to go from Douglas. We would partner with our friends over at Cobb, load on their buses, and continue east. Does this, and my citizens have to pay twice. They used from Douglas to Cobb, and now I've got a reset on that bus. That's all I'm asking.
No, it, it'll be seamless.
They could, so in other words, when I get on that CCT, I just, what, swipe my card or my little, can I keep going?
Yes.
That's all I was asking. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Watson. Appreciate your presentation. Number 12, authorization to amend the Communications and Community Relations budget for the donations received for September Saturdays in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Director Martin.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. These, these funds are, as a result of September Saturday's festival, two-day festival that we had, and as I understand it, the funds collected from the sponsors of the event. We have to request authorization to have our budget amended. Communications, Communications Department budget amended. And that's what this request is about.
Okay. Pretty succinct, Lieutenant. Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners on this? Commissioner Guyer?
Just one question. Didn't we do this in conjunction with the SCREW system? Do they get this money or do we?
This, we did it, they're the beneficiaries, and the funds they receive are from the, the non-food vendors. We had like over 200 of them. They had to pay seventy-five dollars for the fee to rent space, and that's what they get.
So, where did this come from?
Sure. So, this came from total costs of expenditures. You know, we're talking about salaries for building management and maintenance, rides, inflatables, rock climbing walls, there are other additional costs in terms of public relations, communications over time, and professional services. Also, a list.
This came from sponsors? Is that what you're saying?
We collected funds from sponsors to pay for expenditures to help.
And that's what this is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just confused, because I knew the SCREW system was involved with Sept-September 7th.
Yes, absolutely.
I yield back.
Thank you, Director Martin. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tab number 13, authorization to advertise for a public hearing to be held on November 6, 2018 for the purpose of amending section 14-72, zones prohibiting trucks with more than six wheels to access some roads, and remove some roads from the list of prohibited zones. Director Valentine.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This, this item, because we have to amend the county code, requires a public hearing, and that is, again, for the purpose of adding some roads and eliminating some road sections from the current list. Particularly, the area in question is the Douglas Hill and Factory Shoals area that's been developing with industrial data centers and the like. And as those zoning requests were approved, or the site plans were approved, the roads still carried the restriction against trucks. But we're anticipating that, obviously, they're going to need to be able to get trucks into those facilities. So, that was the primary driver for this element. There's also been a few other roads that have become cut-throughs in some neighborhoods that we've received a number of complaints about, and so, we're adding those, looking to add those to that list.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Comments? Commissioner Guyer?
The two that we were adding, or having the public hearing about, is North Baggot and what?
It's.
Is it Beechwood?
Yes, it's Beechwood.
Beechwood?
Yes.
We have some no-truck zones now that tractor trailers are continuing to go down. Post Road, we have a bridge limit on that one, but they continue, I hear from constituents all the time about the tractor trailers, eighteen-wheelers, you know, going down Post Road. I think the sign at 166 and Post is too far down Post Road for them to turn around when they see it's a no-truck. It needs to be moved up, is what I'm saying. I think we have the same problem on.
South Flat Rock.
South Flat Rock Road, because of the city limits. And we've talked, I've talked with Mark several times about this. The sign needs to be put in the city limits, but it needs to be closer to the intersection where they turn, because once they turn, they can't turn around. And I know that there's a problem with manpower and everything about policing this. Bobby and I were talking before our meeting about the number of tractor trailers that's going to be coming around Bright Star Road and Highway 5 because of the huge, and I mean huge, facility that's built within the city. Where are those trucks going to go? I think part of Bright Star Road is a no-truck zone. However, I've been hearing from my constituents that they're going down Bright Star Road from Douglas Boulevard to Highway 5, and that supposedly is a no-truck zone. Do you know?
I do not know, but I'll look into it.
Well, that's what I've been told, but you would need to look into that. But what, how, how can we police this? There's no need in making it a no-truck zone if, or no-through trucks, no-through trucks, if it's, if we're not going to enforce it.
Well, it is, Commissioner, to your point, it is a good start, because to be able to enforce it, it would have to be on the list as a restricted route. But I understand your point, that, that that is the, the starting point. And then, the enforcement is the second part of that.
Because most of the roads that we have the no-truck zone on are the narrow roads, and a tractor trailer is tearing up the shoulders and breaking off the pavement and everything. So, I don't know what the answer is, but if we're going to have a no-truck zone, we need to enforce it some way. So, maybe we can get with the sheriff's office and see if we can't, see what we, they need in order to be able to have the manpower to enforce these no-truck zones. I yield back.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Guyer. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, I'll.
Do you have a comment?
I'll just add, and you did say Beechwood. It's, it's on you? I think the sheriff would, would be more than happy for us to give him more manpower, more budget dollars, and to, to do the other part of this, which I think is ideal. What about Cherokee? I know that's part of City, and is that, oh, we already got the signage up there, because we, we kind of had this whole thing with the city, and off of Fairman Road, Cherokee. And I just passed a truck this morning, stuck.
They need to turn.
Yeah, they couldn't even turn back around. But I think we got with the city to help me, correct me if I'm wrong, and put the signage up for the tour 20, or what I know is at least out by the bank, so hopefully they won't make that right turn. But I think there's a signage up high somewhere, so they, they won't make the right turn, am I right? Help me out, Mark, with that.
Yes, and there's two big signs at the intersection. They can't miss them.
Right, right, but I just saw one this morning.
Oh, yeah.
Stuck on Cherokee, and it's like, wow. But yes, I think what you're doing is, is great. I think this is just kind of the, the step in the right direction, because we got, the signs need to be posted, so at least if, so that law enforcement can do their job. Because if not, then law enforcement can't really do their job, so. But there's some other thought process as to adding some other things to these through-truck trafficking or not that we can possibly do, though, but I think Mark and I have had a couple of conversations, especially with Beechwood, about some other possibilities that would get the community involved, meaning from a cost perspective. But at least we're having those kind of dialogues, and hopes that we can figure out what, what's next to kind of help relieve that, that through-truck trafficking that, and I truly think too, sometime, no fault on the truckers themselves, but I think their GPS just kind of say, here's a route to go, and they go like, okay, make a right turn, doop, and now they're, they're engaged, and it's over at that point. Is, is there any way, any possibility that maybe from that GPS perspective, a GSI, or what would it be? You know what I'm talking about, that we can kind of engage from that perspective to, to make sure it's online, that, you know, that, that G, the GSI, whatever, whatever their driving rules, whatever that they do.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of services, like Waze is one of them.
Yes.
And, and the, the Georgia DOT is very engaged with them, with the trucking industry for that reason.
Okay.
To be able, so what, what we would do is convey that information to the Georgia DOT, and they would then pass it on to Waze and other similar services to, to get that rectified.
Yeah, because somebody coming from Texas don't have a clue that they can't go up Cherokee or Beechwood. Don't have a clue. And they just leave you guys, the law enforcement, in an awkward situation of like, you know, I'm, I'm in it now, so.
I wonder how they disseminate between a truck and a car on Waze. I'm in my car.
Okay.
And I go to Waze to get around the traffic jam. How, if a trucker's got the same Waze, he's going to get the same shortcut I get. How do you disseminate between a car, passenger vehicle, and a truck? I don't, I don't know, unless they have different websites.
It, it's the same website, but, but it's, it's a matter of getting the communication to the trucking industry separately.
Yeah.
Because, because there would be no way for the information service to distinguish. But having conversations directly with the trucking industry to make them aware that there are certain restrictions in these areas.
Right.
And so that, so that they know not to follow that, that particular.
Well, let's do, I agree, let's see what we can do on our end to help with that, because you're right. I mean, whether I'm driving my motorcycle or, or my eighteen-wheeler, what, what determines what I'm driving, what I'm taking, you know, the way approach, when I'm getting around, so. But something to think about. I yield back.
Okay, thank you. So, you will explore that for us, Director Valentine? Okay, I'll move on. I was scratching your head. I thought you raised your hand.
No, we both were, but I'll yield.
Okay. Did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Because I saw Commissioner Moke was scratching his head. Okay.
I'll be real quick. I appreciate the whole conversation with technology, its uses, but we, there's still human interaction. I, I take a healthy dose of, of, I will never turn over all my decision-making to a computer. I will never submit to technology. While I need it more than anybody for supplementals and things I use to, for what I have to live on a day-to-day, it's one of those where, like, I don't want ever us to ever get to a point where we put things in place where you're being told what to do, but you're, you're a human, right? So, there's something about freedom and independence that says, okay, I get it, but pay attention, right? Right? Pay attention to what's moving. So, please, explore all these things. I, I just, I, I, please, in your previous question on cyber, all of that, there's something about common sense. There's something about, look, I'm interacting with my environment, but I'm not viewing so much that the environment moves me. I ask that you guys think through, as you administrators are looking at things, that like, okay, but certain things is to educate people to like, pay attention. You know, and we, sometimes we put money into things, it's like, okay, but why are we solving that anyway? But I get it as a supplement, but not to abandon our, our free moral will.
But I get it as a supplement, but not to abandon our free moral will to think and interact.
Hi you.
Okay. Thank you. Director Valentine will move on. 14, authorization to advertise for a public hearing to be held on November 6, 2018 for the purpose of amending section 14-74, which deals with speed limits to add some roads, remove some roads, and adjust road lengths to more accurately reflect actual conditions. Director Valentine?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This element also, because it is embedded in the code, requires a public hearing. And what this is, every three years, I believe, the sheriff's department has to apply for a radar permit or authorization to run radar on the list of roads in the county. And so we took this opportunity, in conjunction with the sheriff's department, to take a look at the existing list and confirm that all of the roads on the list were decided properly, that the lengths were accurate as best we could determine, and that we had all the roads that needed to be on the list. And so we determined that there were a number, quite a number of roads that were not on the list that needed to be added. Now, the process requires, the process is really embedded in federal regulation, and it requires an engineering study to be done on the routes before they can be considered for inclusion for radar permit. So in conjunction with the sheriff's department, we looked at all the roads, including all of the new ones that we're looking to add, all of the existing ones. We then sent that information to the Georgia Department of Transportation. They have to do an analysis and concur on the list, and that process has been completed. So we're at a juncture now where we need to amend the code so that the list can be amended, so that then the sheriff's department can file their application that conforms to our adopted list. And that will come as an agenda item later on.
Okay. Sounds like a process. And I see that you want this public hearing November 6, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board before we move on to the next one? Tab number 15, authorization to accept funds in an amount of $5,000 from Greystone Power for the Douglas County Citizens Academy Alumni Association and amend the budget, external affairs budget, I'm sorry. Tiffany Stewart Stanley, Director Stanley.
So Greystone has made a commitment to the Citizens Academy Alumni Association of $25,000, and they will be doing that commitment over a five-year period, $5,000 a year. So we're just asking to be allowed to accept those funds and amend the external affairs budget to allow those funds for the operation of the Citizens Academy Alumni Association.
Okay. Commissioner Molkier?
Yes, thank you. When I met with Gary Miller at Greystone along with our chairman of the Alumni Association, Daphne Simmons, I think everybody knows Daphne, my left hand and right hand. Greystone conveyed a considerable expression of faith as a great corporate citizen that it has a strong belief in propagating and encouraging citizen engagement, participation in the community and in the government. And to that end, the Citizen Academy has had about 60 graduates over the past 40, 40 years of its existence. And because of those numbers of graduates, the commission sanctioned the establishment of the Alumni Association. So what? To what end? It's all about actively, continually engagement, reaching out into the community, into various activities. And so this funding is going to provide a non-governmental stake in that citizen engagement. So I'm extremely, extremely gratified by Greystone's faith in the program. To that end, I have some recommendations that we would like the commission to give some thought to. As a great contribution comes in, it's also a great responsibility.
Yes.
And some of my suggestions are that we, that we externalize the board, the Alumni Association Board, to include some public citizens, a public, perhaps a Greystone representative, and also representative from the county commission. This is needed to provide oversight of the program and certainly to establish parameters around, you know, how the money is to be spent. This is very, this is a very serious thing. I take it, I take it very seriously. And I also would recommend that that board also present a semi-annual report to the Board of Commissioners on what they have been doing, what they've accomplished over the previous six months. So with that, I just extend my heartfelt thanks to Greystone, great Douglas County citizen. Hi you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Molkier, congratulations. I appreciate what Greystone has done. This is a nice milestone, so thank you. Director Stanley. Next, we have tab number 16, authorization to approve the revised 2018 schedule for work sessions and commission meetings. Luke Watson?
Yes, we inadvertently scheduled one of the work sessions on a holiday, so we need to just reschedule that for the Thursday before, like we normally do for holidays.
Okay. Which holiday?
Martin Luther King.
Okay. All right. Any questions or self, self-explanatory? Okay. Tab number 17, last but not least, which is a form of January few to the Regional Board of Behavioral and Development and Disabilities Effectively Immediately. The board asked me last time to look through the applications and look at the background of these, of the applications that we had. And January few's, Dr. Few, actually had experience in both behavioral health and mental health, so that I thought that this would be, I recommend Dr. Few, Dr. January Few. This board, okay? Any questions from the board? All right, next we have the approval of the expenses for next, I mean, for tomorrow. So please take a look at those, Board of Commissioners, and you will approve accordingly. And then we have Commissioner comments of Vice Chairman Robinson. Do you have anything you want, you want to speak on these three topics?
Yeah, I'm going to be very, very tight. How about that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So we get us out of here. Okay, Mark, can you, I'm just going to move these around very quickly. And this is just for the public record, what, two Fridays ago, we had a constitutional officer retreat, as we've always done. We pretty much almost had a full house of various people to come before the Board of Commissioners to pitch, they're not directly reporting to Mark Tino, the county administrator. I wanted to make sure for the record that what was spoken in that public meeting gets into the press and gets into our official records. But Mark, do you have a couple of highlights from maybe, one from all the areas that was emphasized, and it's just for the record?
Yes, we do, and we'll actually go into it more, in more detail, like the budget retreat, like we do every year.
Yep.
But essentially magistrate, magistrate and DA were asking for new employees. I think Judge McLean, part of his, part of Superior Court was asking for, just letting us know that he plans to expand the accountability court.
Yes.
State court was mostly asking for raises for employees. Public defender was asking for raises and a replacement vehicle, and a new assistant public defender. Clerk of court was asking for raises for employees. Juvenile court raises for employees. Legal staff assistant for juvenile public defender. And a couple of these departments have mentioned carpet specifically, but Mark Price and Building Services is looking at evaluating those areas and putting them in priority on which ones need to be done first. Sheriff Department, computer refresh, body camera refresh, and this is just an overview, 22 patrol cars, new positions, and raising the deputy, deputy starting page.
All right, that's it. I mean, for the record, again, we didn't have a full Board of Commissioners, I think that's important. We didn't have the press there. I think it's important to get these things on record, not wait to the retreat, and then we get all of a sudden that we didn't have time to sort of process this. But last question to that county administrator, are the presentations or any presentation that were done by these officers, are they available to us?
Yes, they're on, they're in the Dropbox.
Our personal, okay, in our Dropbox, okay. But that information is available to the publisher that they asked for, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to move on, Madam Chair. Real quick, oh.
She stepped out of her mouth.
All right, so me then. All right, I'll keep moving. All right, James Worthington, really quickly, we want to talk about neighborhood blight that occurred, that's occurring in Douglas County right now. Really quickly, can you give us this sort of an overview of where we are? And I'm going to give you a segue. Two weekends ago, I had an eight-to-eight boot camp in, at Deer Lake, the public came out, and I broached the subject to the citizens to get their, like, as I do in District Two. Do you see this as an issue? Should we take any action? If a provision is there for us to get involved using public dollars to solve a private problem, should we? And that was my only goal. I mean, as you know, I don't go in there for the very first time and talking to citizens with this, this solution set, because of course, there is not one yet. We haven't gone through our full process yet. And sometimes when you talk to citizens about subjects like this, you have to listen. You have to like, really go in there and just like, you're not trying to sell them their hand, you're not trying to frame it down a certain path, you're just sort of like, okay, do y'all even see that there's blight? I mean, what do y'all really think about these incomplete communities? Of course, we didn't get into what the difference between a final plaid and is it unplatted or platted? Wasn't time for that. I, my simple goal was to see for my citizens, should I even continue to move forward? Should I even continue to endorse or sponsor this as a solution? And I got my answer, which is to continue on. That being said, I'd like to ask you, James, can you frame, what would be our next steps? And that's it. I don't want to go long, Madam Chair has to get, we have to keep moving.
Okay.
But just frame the process.
So the next step that we're involved with is, some of the people up here in the last meeting spoke about it, and their concerns and their ideas. We're regrouping with them, kind of putting together a think tank, so to speak. Some of the people from this, my departments and other departments in the county, industry professionals from a multitude of different places, including bankers, lenders, realtors, developers, builders, trying to put together a bigger group of people to get a broader sense of ideas. And we will kind of just compile that and probably bring that back to y'all and go from there.
Okay. So it's part of a process and a policy. Again, we just wanted to frame this, Madam Chair, that we're continuing on, you're going to work through the process, and we'll get back to Mitchell. Correct, sir? All right. I'm going to keep going and tie, thank you. I'm going to keep going and tie this into my last comment about animal shelter. And so, as you guys know, our directors, every now and then, we as elected officials, Board of Commissioners, especially me, will make a random call just to check on things, see how you guys are doing. And every now and then, we get real-life insight into the administration of what's happening. And we may discover like, ooh, right? Because we don't live day-to-day. We're not 24-hour-seven like some of y'all, or, you know, on, you know, four on, four off, or even nine to five. And so every now and then, we get to do our job, and we discover something. And so, that being said, one of the things that I came across was sort of this whole animal shelter. And it was, and I called Commissioner Molkier, and again, there's a purpose for the animal shelter that we had there. But I was asking a question, and we got into this conversation about euthanasia. What do we do in an animal shelter that once, our policy says one thing, but what happens when we extend beyond that? And this is a policy that, that's something that we took on as a Board of Commissioners when we first started with all that 5,000, 10,000 people weighing in on the animal shelter. I mean, again, you guys remember that, that experience. But the question becomes, as the Board of Commissioners take up legislation that we're responsible for, the question is, how do we want to go about tackling that? So Commissioner Molkier, I picked this one as one to get your thoughts, is that what happens as we go down, and I'm just, there's no action here. The point is, as I go down the fact that, in sort of the ordinance regarding the animal shelter, the policy reads the following, it says, we go down the list and says, okay, if they're sick, if they're bad, and eventually you get down to what's called healthy animals. My question is, okay, so what do we do when we stress test, we're 100 animals over, we don't have cages, we don't, there's no support, what do we do? Do we need to clarify what's healthy animals? And I mean, and sometimes you can't solve that here, but that's what the public debate is about. Both sides of that argument is like, what do we do, if anything? So I wanted to pause on that and broach the subject to say, it's something that you want to co look into this and not to force the subject, but I'll stop there.
Well, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Molkier?
Certainly, you know, we're talking about policy review.
Right.
And this would be part and parcel of that process. We, and we also talked about perhaps a policy committee. Well, we already have a policy committee in terms of the animal shelters, and it's the citizens' panel that can certainly make recommendations. The, now, the animal shelter's not over 100, that was just hyperbole, what it was.
Yes, it was.
It's over 100, my understanding, it was, it was full.
It's just full. No, no, we're just saying, if you, we stress tested above and beyond, what happens when we had a spike? What do we do?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
And the best thing that we can do is, first of all, we have to have, we have to have a policy, we have to have, I think also, management discretion on how to apply that policy up to a certain point. So basically, a policy within a policy or latitude for the management, the director who's operating that, that facility. The shelter, first of all, everyone has to realize that the animal shelter, main purpose end of the day is public health and safety. And it's not adoptions, and it's not reading programs, and it's not all of those other things, which I firmly embrace. I want to see as few animals euthanized. I'm the commissioner that attended a euthanasia. And that would have been a couple of years ago, it's one of the toughest, toughest things that I went through. So I understand what's involved, and I understand what's involved on the staff. So it's something that we want to avoid at all costs. You often hear no-kill shelter. Now, you have no-kill shelters, and you have shelters that are public health facilities. That's, that's the primary goal. So how do you, how do you balance those two things? Well, most industry experts consider euthanasia under, under 10% to be, to be a no-kill shelter, because you do have those instances where a dog cannot be socialized. The dog is so injured that it would be a burden on taxpayers to, you know, pay for $8,000 worth of surgery. And in situations like that, again, that goes to policy decision. Douglas County does a yeoman's work in being very, very low, if not the lowest in the state. I'll go out on that limb. I'd be shocked if we're not the lowest euthanasia shelter. But there are things that we can do in terms of community, in terms of volunteerism and rescues, you know, we have rescues that specialize in poodles. Unfortunately, we don't get a lot of poodles at shelter, we get a lot of pit bulls. And that's another inherent problem there. If you go in the shelter, you know, it seems like over half of them are pit bull or pit bull mixes. And let me say this, I've got nothing against pit bulls, I've had them, and they're, and they're great dogs, but they can be abused, and they can be, they can be dangerous. So it becomes about an issue of adoptability and safety in putting animals into a home. I think that's got to be part of the decision mechanism. Again, I'll go back to my first statement, we have, and I think we should direct and call upon our Animal Control Advisory Board to review policy, make recommendations to changes, and run them before approval to the, to the full, through the county administrator, through the full commission. And pardon me, I forgot on my soapbox a little bit.
Oh, that's okay.
No, this was by, Madam Chair, may I close out?
Sure.
Yeah, this was by design, to set Commissioner Molkier up to speak about this, but this is a real-time example. Because it was a real example, we did reach out to Pat Bolger, who's the chair of the Animal Control Advisory Board, is there to take a look at this, and it is on their next meeting, the third Wednesday of October. And that's for the public, I guess it's a public meeting, is there?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, at the, I guess, the animal shelter right there over in Deer Lake. So anyway, Madam Chair, the point was just to bring this up as how we work alongside of you. There's some things that are to the administrative minister, some in which we have to, you know, come alongside. And I want to give my, some highlights.
Okay.
Oh, Madam Chair, I forgot something, the conversation I had with Commissioner Robinson while I was out of town, I had to do with someone was being dispossessed out of their, I don't know if it was a home or apartment, and I think they had six Great Dane puppies. They had six, and we had, we had three, we had three pens. So it became an issue, what do you do? And so I believe it was resolved satisfactorily, but, you know, your first call to different rescues and around the community. You know, surprisingly, I, I... You know, surprisingly, I, I was, uh, again, I'm gonna go kinda get, get in the weeds a little bit. I was surprised, I was at a gas station in North Georgia, and I saw this truck and, and trailer. I just want like a great big bread truck or something like that, big UPS van. And it had, uh, Petco on the side of it. That van comes to southeastern United States, Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and picks up animals and takes them to the northeastern United States where they have a shortage of, of pet, pet. And so that's another, uh, thing that I think now that we have a, a state-of-the-art shelter, uh, we can see some cooperation with, with companies like, uh, like Petco and Petsmart and so forth, that we couldn't before because of the status of our shelter at that time. So that, that's another avenue. So again, I apologize, I yield back.
Okay. All right, thank you all, that was some great discussion. Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, uh, ma'am, personnel, uh, real estate and legal litigation.
Okay, thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion is second, you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Take a five, a ten-minute break and come back. Okay, Board of Commissioners, at this time, you have any further discussions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, this meeting is adjourned.
What streetlights, some of you are seeing, give some streetlights.
One of these days, that thing is gonna be.